We'll go ahead and call the meeting before we welcome our guest with us tonight. We got pretty good household tonight. And at this time, I'll ask Paul Lee, please.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have with us tonight Wade Williams, who's a former council member, and he's running for mayor. So I'd ask him to give the indication away.
I want to do thanks for this wonderful day, Lord, opportunity to come in council meeting tonight. Lord, I just pray that you're blessed upon the mayor and the council tonight. Lord, just watch and guide them and direct them. Lord, each assistant that's made tonight, I pray, be important to you with. Lord, thank you for our city. Bless each person that's here tonight. All these many favors I ask in your precious name. Amen.
At this time, I recommend, if everybody had a chance to review the minutes of the last meeting, I recommend that we approve the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Scotty, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Paul, all in favor?
All in.
Okay, motion carried. A recommendation to approve accounts payable, ladies. Has the Finance Committee had a chance to review those bills?
We've looked at half of them, so we can approve them on contingent of portion.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve bills contingent on wishing them reviewed? Francis, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Scotty, all in favor?
All in.
Okay, motion carried. We have some visitors with us tonight. We have a group paper here from Action Properties LLC on a proposed development of commercial property in the area. And I think Mr. Jim, are you going to be one of the spokespersons?
Yes, ma'am.
Jim Ockelberger, and Knox Ross.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. AG Helton and his father is with us tonight. Good to have all of you with us. So just come forward, we need a presentation.
Thank you. We all have, this is kind of unusual, we've been sitting on this side of the room. I'm usually up there with the mayor, yes.
Yeah, I didn't hear you. This is a mayor. He's a mayor of a town in Mississippi. He's also a CPA.
That's right. And that's what I'm here for tonight. I'm a CPA, and my client is Action Properties, which AG and Kenneth Elton, who are the principals of that company, are here with us tonight as well. But we are interested in doing a redevelopment to the former Higgly Wiggly Shopping Center that's on Military Drive South, not too far down from here. And we, as we all discussed, we have a pretty long track record of doing redevelopments around the country in different areas. We just didn't want to jasper an old food court location there. And we've become pretty good at it to bring additional revenue to the city and bringing in some businesses, I think, that can help the city retain and grow its business, that people can stay here instead of going to Tupelo or wherever. What we're asking from you is to help us make this work for us, is under an amendment to the Alabama Code, a few years ago, it allows the city to do a tax, a sales tax rebate. And we did this with the city of Jasper. And what it says is, is that you would rebate us 30% of the sales tax revenue generated, new sales tax revenue generated by the center for the first five years, and then year six will be 20%, year seven be 10%.
Knox.
I'm sorry.
It's like for the city, you're not limited to 30%, you can't get more.
And what was that last point?
It was, what we're looking at is a 30% each year for five years.
I understand that.
And then 20% in year six, and 10% in year seven.
Okay, I didn't get the 10%.
And then after that, it'll be over. And to give you some idea, on my way up here, I put together some numbers to give you an idea of what the city could expect. If, we think that the center will gross between $3 and $5 million in sales a year, based on our experience in other centers of similar size. So if the center did $3 million a year, and you have a 3% tax rate, that is about $90,000 a year of sales tax that that would generate. So over the life of the agreement between us, that would generate you about $630,000 in revenue, which I suspect is probably a fair amount of revenue for you. If we hit the high end of projection, which is $5 million, then we project it to generate a gross of $1,500,000 in sales tax revenue over that five-year period, that seven-year period. And over those periods of time, you would rebate to us out of that, on the low end, $162,000 over the seven years, up to $270,000 over at the high end. And so it's incumbent on us, it kind of makes us both a participant, is that we want better stores that are going to sell more, because we both make more money.
Also, the companies and stuff that I try to attract and talk to and stuff, I mean, you know, they don't pay top dollar on the rents and stuff. So this kind of helps, you know, it helps me kind of offset some costs long-term, you know, and so it doesn't cost the city anything. It doesn't cost you a penny. Because, you know, it's revenue that's not there.
That's one of the things, and we discuss, I think when we discuss and we talk to y'all, is that kind of model we follow is, is we have companies, and there's probably 10 or 15 of them we deal with, that tell us we want to go to different locations, let's just say Hamilton. Hamilton's a place I've identified, and they say, "All right, we'll go there, we'll pay, we're only going to pay you so much a square foot." And so then, we've got to find a way to make that work, that fits our model, and that's something that, and this helps us do that. So that helps us get them in here, a good store in here, at a price they're willing to pay, at a price we can afford to build the center.
How many tenants are we talking about?
Well, it just kind of depends.
How you about to build this?
This is a lot like a Jigsaw puzzle, you know. I mean, I haven't bought the building yet, but you know, I kind of need to know what the city can do, and then I can kind of quite this $160,000 against the construction costs, blah, 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 and then so I know what I need to come in for a rental rate to charge the companies.
Right.
And then one thing that we haven't talked about, of course, you know, the building's been empty for a while, is the jobs that's going to be created, also here in the community. It's going to keep people at home here, shopping in this community, so.
Which are projected on jobs?
Probably 20.
We talked about 20.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, ma'am.
That's, we were, that's another thing we were doing.
I think that's probably like three tenants in the building. If I can get four in there, you know, because you've got to kind of subdivide it out, you've got to get architectural and all that stuff.
20 feet's in that building. We discussed that one time.
Oh, 40,000, I think.
About 40,000 feet.
And then it also includes a smaller part of that center, you know, then there's Subway in their town.
Yeah.
The whole center's like 48,000.
Right.
48,000.
Right. But while we talked about, these companies normally hire local people to work for them. I mean, they're not going to be looking for big one, I think, so.
But we did talk that those companies might bring in their managers.
Well, they might, but they're going to live around here somewhere.
Possibly, yes, ma'am.
Possibly.
Actually, there could be people moving in the town, so.
Right, that's possible, yeah.
And I believe when we spoke, when we were here before, should an industry or a business that's already in the city locate to that location where there's no sales tax?
Just on the increase, we would not, I mean, you're not, so, you're not, you're not asking, we're not asking for anything, you know, or getting.
That's right. So I mean, whatever Subway's been generating, I mean, I don't know, I might know, because I anticipate a bump in their sales, once I bring other tenants into that shopping center, I just, you know, normally, the existing tenants, like Subways and that kind of stuff, they normally experience about a 20 to 30% bump in their sales, so.
That's right. So let's just say if you have a dollar store in town, decide to move out there, whatever they're doing now would sort of be the baseline. So we would just be looking at what was above that. So again, there's really no risk to the city. We're not asking you to underwrite anything, or loan us any money, or anything like that. It's just we're trying to anticipate in growth.
And what percent without, so they can?
In the same.
Well, we just projected 30.
That's right, right.
And that leaves off 70%.
That's right.
Of something that's not really kind of generating today, you know.
Right.
But now, you can do more, if you want.
You can do more if you can.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you.
Listen, I'd like to, if I may, I'd like to pass.
Yeah.
You wrote sure that kind of gave you a floor, photograph, and kind of where, how to take this.
I think we have three tenants on schedule, I mean, crawling out there. Of course, you know, we work on this stuff in advance.
So if you, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. So anyway, so it is something to change, but obviously, if I get more in there, there's more sales and more rent and all that kind of stuff.
You look on the, once you open brochure, you actually see the site itself, and then to the right, under the council members, you'll see the floor, and you're going to see a highlight sign, and then where the buildings actually look like today. And then also, we have an architect rendering of what we would like to do, and this is our proposed side view of what the building would look like. As you can see, the gold and the granite and the different faces look there.
I didn't realize that, given all the buildings that are, the smaller buildings, with that font.
Yes, ma'am. That's roughly about 6,000 to 6,500 square feet total that join the actual main building itself. And also, yes, actually, the errands is the line of the property from channel one, I believe the billboard signs, to this channel there, to their back, where the dollar bill is actually property. Also, there's a diagram of tenant A, tenant B, and tenant C, to further help y'all to evaluate how the dividing may be done within the side of the building, for the tenants to be split. But of course, that may be changed due to the tenant's concept of which tenant, that may have an option to bring here. Officer Mayor, this is a little bit of history of Action Property, and it has some additional detailed information about Mr. Elton, and then some of the other projects that we've done.
Just additional properties, I mean, properties that's right, and two, in case you.
I went online.
Okay, great. That's basically the same thing. It is.
Y'all have done several developments in Mississippi, Alabama.
Yes, ma'am, Texas.
Yeah. And Moise, the one in West City, Illinois.
That's right, that's right, that's right. We just got through them, and I think that's when we showed you a before and after.
Appreciate you looking at Hamilton, and we, is there any questions that anybody else might have? Since they have been here, I'll explain it to the people in the audience, they have made a trip here, maybe two, and they have met with me individually, and then they've met with each council member individually. So they've already laid this out to us, this reason we're probably not asking a lot of questions of them tonight, because they've answered most of our questions. And I think what we are not prepared to do is vote tonight, because if there is a tax abatement that is being considered, then we have to have a public hearing, because that is.
Yes, ma'am.
It is public day.
If you have to publish it and all that stuff.
So we would take it under advisement and study the situation, and might even leave no more information.
Yes, ma'am. And we can certainly be here for any public hearing, anything else that needs to be.
Okay, all right. And Scott, is there anything you need to add as our attorney?
Not at this point, no ma'am.
And let's just say for the sake of conversation, if you, all this say were approved, say, today or tomorrow, whenever, how soon are we looking at results regarding tenants coming in, setting up? Are we talking about two, four months, for the first of the year? Are we talking about sooner, or what's, you got a?
Right, I mean, it a lot depends on. Right, I mean, if the vote was to be approved, I could probably have a couple of tenants open before Thanksgiving. Possibly one of them, but pretty sure I get two, for sure, before Thanksgiving.
And so you're saying that this runs through, where's my, what was the business file, the right, was it Subway, or did it go on?
Basically, from errands and towards Dollar Tree.
All right, okay. Most of those are occupied, except for one.
If it was one or two, it's something. Most of it's.
Say, if it were Jones.
Yeah, Subway, Channel one, yeah.
I think there's a couple of slots.
Thank you, all. Yeah, we really appreciate that. For coming here tonight. And Mr. Allen, we are happy to have you as the father of the council.
Yes, ma'am. We just want to show you where they came to show that we're interested in Hamilton, so we appreciate your time.
Well, thank you so much.
And Mayor, if we need anything, or we need to come back, we'd be happy to do it.
If you have any questions, the mayor and I will get any questions from you.
Yes, ma'am, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number four on our agenda is to, a recommendation to approve the changes to our personnel policy pertaining to holiday pay. In April, it's been handy as a side talk, and Hampton gets so personnel policies put together. And so April, if you would explain to us the change that you made to the policy.
The change that we're proposing is to basically make it uniform in every department, to get to get away with comp time entirely, and to change it to where if we do have a city employee, whether it be fire, mostly fire police is what we're looking to, sometimes water, if we have any of them that are working on a paid holiday, they will get eight additional hours added to their pay. That is standard, you know, it's not like we're giving anything that's standard with everywhere that we've checked with. So if you've got a, if you've got a fire personnel or a police department personnel working on a paid holiday, they can get their regular rate of pay plus an additional eight hours, so that way they are compensated for the holiday. The other change would be to do away with comp time, that's kind of something that's slipped and dragged, that's got done away with, it's a bookkeeping issue. We'll have, keep the same annual leave, the same sick leave, and then we've got a couple other kinds of leaves, but we're getting away with the comp time.
And we've already voted to add those to the holidays, haven't we? We have, so.
Actually, this, it sort of equalizes everything. If you're a policeman or a fireman, and you're asked to work, or your scheduled workday, work on a holiday, you're going to get your regular pay, plus your eight hours on holiday pay, and that'll be consistent for all departments. And two, that helps the city, in that if they take pay instead of, if they're required to take pay instead of comp time, that puts us in a better position not to have as much overtime, so that's good for the city all together. Do I have a recommendation to approve a change? Please go.
Now, let me ask a question.
Okay.
They're already getting eight hours for the holiday pay.
They are, yeah.
So what we're really doing is just doing away with comp time.
We have one department that was taking 12 hours, getting paid for 12 hours. So we're making it across the board, where holiday pay is eight hours, instead of.
Well, you have the fire department, they work 24 hours.
But they should work two days a week.
Police department, they work 12 hours.
But they'll be compensated for it.
But they're just going to get eight hours for that holiday pay.
Right, which is standard.
I just wanted to get that clear.
Right. And what you check with other municipalities, that is what's done standard.
Any more questions, or commentings from the council? Then I have a recommendation to approve the changes to our personnel policy pertaining to holiday pay. Do I have a motion?
Paul.
Paul, do I have a second?
I'll say.
April, all in favor? Motion carried. We did have some comp time already built up, and so in order to start over and start even, I recommend that the city pay within the next 30 days employees for holiday pay due that has accumulated as comp time. So I'm recommending that we go ahead and settle up with the employees within the next 30 days for any pay due that was holiday paid.
Are we talking about the police department and the fire department both?
All departments.
Or is it just?
All departments, all departments.
All departments, yeah. All departments.
Any department.
Well, all departments don't get comp time, they just get paid around. So we've only got two departments?
Water department does comp time.
They do?
I don't know if they've got any on the books, but yes, they do.
Have you got any on your books?
She's not having one.
Well, what's, are we just talking about the police department?
We're talking about the police department. Everybody else is taking their time off, you know.
Well, I noticed that in our personnel policy, that it requires that they take it off within 90 days.
That's right.
But somehow that slipped through.
Well, I understand, everybody was given a policy, and they signed for it, but somehow it just got slipped through the cracks.
Well, actually, everybody didn't get a copy of the policy. The new hires did not get a copy, so we had about five that had not got a copy of the policy. Yeah, they'll have one night.
We're going to get them to sign it, sign off on it.
If we approve this new policy.
We can't have this again.
No, no.
We can't have it. Costs too much money.
And another thing we talked about is individually, maybe Megan Jenner, the mayor Jenner, somebody making with all the department heads, and counseling with all the employees about the specifics of the personnel policy.
The previous personnel policy was they were required and did sign for it, just wanted to make that known.
Yeah, I've got a copy of that, yes. But we had new hires since then that did not get a copy.
So they will have to pay their taxes on this money that they're getting, right?
Okay, any more discussion? If not, do I have a motion? Um, Francis made a motion. Do I have a second?
And this is for within 30 days.
And all in favor? Newenstein, Hollenstein, motion, the ayes took the motion. Okay? At this time, I have a recommendation to approve the lowest fee of cost estimate of $14,600 from extreme contractors for asphalt paving and striping of the city hall parking lot to be paid out of the capital improvement funds. Do I have a motion? We did get two cost estimates, and this one was the lowest, and this, these are local people, and the other one was not a local person. So the other bill, that was $14,990 from Dixie Paving. So do I have a motion that we accept?
I just wanted to point out with this, I really kind of have an issue with us taking this money and paving a parking lot for maybe five or six cars, because the way I feel, I don't think there's one citizen in Hamilton that can't tell us a road that needs paved, a side road that needs paved. You know, it's coming out of the same fund that we've got money in there to pave roads with, and I just think that that needs to take priority over a parking lot.
Up off the paving of the street came out gas.
Yeah, it comes out of money.
But it can't come out.
It could come out.
Yes, this money could be used for paving roads.
Well, I have a recommendation, do I have a motion? I'll make the motion, do I have a second? Francis seconded. All in favor? Do I have any?
Who was that? And Scotty?
No, I brought it in.
Okay, the motion carried. Recommendation to approve the low bid of $7,000 from Philip Lindsay to do the labor and repairs from storm damage at the Recreation Center area. The material cost is $6,872, and the insurance company, they've already issued us a check, take care of this. So when Larry did it out, we got two estimates, and Philip Lindsay was quite a lot, it was several dollars less. His was 7,100, and the other estimate was 8,850, and it was devalued. So I make a motion that we approve the low estimate of $7,000 from Philip Lindsay.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
What all, does this include repairing up there? I know we've got that overhyped, that we're waiting, it won't include.
That's not storm damage.
No, no.
This is.
This goes back quite a while back, when it was a preschool.
It's light poles, broken lights, and that sort of thing, yes. Recommendation to approve a two-year contract with NACOD for $5,000 per year for technical assistance. NACOD makes a lot of trips down here, they answer a lot of calls that we have pertaining to action that we're doing around town, and helping us to do grants and that sort of thing. We had a contract with them for two years, and it was for $8,000 for two years, $4,000 a year. And this contract, they've gone up $1,000 a year. Of course, gas is higher, and they're having to make trips down here, they come to attend meetings if we need them, or whatever, and they're asking for $5,000 a year, or $10,000 for a two-year contract. Now, one thing about the way the contract reads, if they keep up with their mileage, they keep up with their time down here, if we don't use the $5,000, it will be for actual hours and gas. But if we use the $5,000 or more, we'll pay more, so we're on the, in doing this contract, we'll be protected, that it can't go up over $5,000.
They have us with grants, too, don't they?
Oh, they have a grant structure. Cities can't operate without these.
The average citizen don't really understand how much we use NACOD. I mean, Wade, as a former councilman, can attest, I mean, you use NACOD almost, it seems like almost every day if you're up here, I mean, they get a lot of work out of them.
And they're so willing and cooperative.
They're getting paid for it.
Yeah, they're getting paid for it.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that one.
Make David, do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor? Ayes have it. We have a situation over at the senior center, we have Amy Peoples that is heading that up, and Amy, I think, does the real job, and she had a helper, and the helper was funded through NACOD. They had some grant money that they used to fund a part-time worker to help serve the meals. I think we've got some 40 homebound meals we serve in the area every day, and then we have 15, 16 people that goes over there and gets a hot meal every day. So they serve up the meals to be delivered, and then they serve the meals there to the people that come in. A lot of them come in early in the morning, they play cards and dominos, and then they get a hot meal, and they go home. So what, since the funding's being cut out, NACOD has asked us if we will step up to the plate and hire a helper for Amy. And Amy, I've talked to Amy, she thinks three hours a day is all she'll need, she wouldn't need somebody being there all the time. So I recommend that we hire a part-time worker for the senior center to work three hours a day at minimum wage. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Make David and Paul, all in favor?
So we're coming from 19 to 15, and at minimum wage, and that's the end. And now, the other girl, with NACOD, that ends 1st of October, end of September. And so that's when the new one will have.
Will have to advertise and start trying to hire.
First of October.
We need to open a checking account for, an account to be named a sex offender account. It's for sex offenders' registration fees. And Chief, how often do they have to register?
Well, they have to register when they arrive into the city. And they have to keep us updated as to any changes of their residence or employment. They have to check in with us quarterly, I believe it is. And every time they check in, they, the statement is that they pay a fee. The fee is used to administer the program as far as any travel or training by the employee that's administering, which is one of the police officers. And any of the administrative support that we have to dedicate towards that. So it's, it's a program that is basically funding itself. But right now, the money that's being collected needs to be put into an account so that we have some oversight of it that's not just strictly in a cash box.
How many do we have right now, sex offenders in our jurisdiction?
It'd be a rough guess, but in our jurisdiction, there's probably thirty or so. And you can go online to the Alabama Department of Public Safety and get the stats for your county, your neighborhood, for, for just the whole United States. But it's, it's not causing any problems right now. The, the, the program, the registration program, it's allowing us to keep up with people. But we don't have any active cases where any of these offenders are repeating right now. But if we do have something that comes up, it gives us an investigative tool to track behavior.
Does it just fee right?
It varies. I think there's one fee when they first register, then there's a kind of an update fee. And I think it's as low as ten dollars and maybe as much as thirty-five.
It's not a lot of money, but we had to open a special account. In order to open the account, we have to have it in our meetings that we approved, in our meetings that we approved it. And Jen takes it to the bank and they open the account and leave the signature cards. So do I have a motion to open this account?
I'll make that motion.
Scotty, have a second. Francis, all in favor? We have an emergency over at the wastewater treatment plant. And our air conditioner took out on a hundred and ten degree day, I think. I think it was hundred and six or something that day that temperature died or the heat index. And Rodney had to get a new condensing unit for the water treatment plant. Because the computer doesn't test right if it gets too hot. And it was getting hot in there. So this was, this is after the fact. We've already had the unit repaired, but I need to, I had to approve tonight. Do I have a motion to approve that unit that was installed last week?
I'll make the motion.
Make David. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All, all in favor? I'm standing. We have Edith Wright that was scheduled to work our upcoming municipal election. And Edith broke her hip and she will be able to be here. So we need to amend a resolution number two oh one two seven dash sixteen, adding Charles Cochran as ballot clerk in place of Edith Wright for the upcoming municipal election on August the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve. And again, on October the ninth, she will be run out. So I need a motion to that effect. Francis, second? Scotty? All in favor? At this time, we have some announcements we need to make. And Jane, I want you to explain to everyone about the absentee voting. How to go about getting an absentee ballot and whatever.
Okay. I'll read a little bit of this. Anyone can pick up any number of blank absentee ballot applications. But only the voter may return the completed application either in person or by mail. And they must be in separate envelopes, like a husband and wife can't be together. I'm talking about people that are not able, physically able to go to the polls on the day of the election. You can, if you know that you're going to be out of the city or out of the county, country, you can come into my office and vote Monday through Friday, eight to five. I've had several people already that's come in and voted because they know they're going to be out of town on that day. Let's see, the August the twenty-third is the last day for regular absentee ballot. And there are emergency absentee ballots. Like if you had to have surgery and you didn't know you were going to have to have it, it's into requiring a doctor's signature, but.
As general rule, the twenty-third is cut off.
But main thing is, anyone can come by my office and pick up an application and take to their grandmother, whoever that's not able to go. They fill out the form, mail it back to me. I will mail them a ballot and the necessary envelopes to put it in. But when they vote, they've got to mail it back with either a copy of their driver's license, social security card. Today I received one. There's a whole list of things that you can use that I send to them for identification. So if they don't have a copy machine like this person today, use the top of a bank statement. They have her name on it. Or a water bill. But they've got to send their identification back and not in the envelope with the ballot in it. It's kind of hard, but I'll be there to help anyone.
They have to be back by August the twenty-third in your office at five o'clock that evening.
That's right.
Thank you, Jen. The Hamilton Police Department, I think, is hosting, or the fund is hosting its first annual disc golf tournament. And the tournament's going to be held in Aggie Land Disc Golf Course over at the Recreation Center on August eleventh, two thousand and twelve. And the registration begins at seven forty-five a.m. until eight forty-five a.m. And players meet in at nine. So they'll start playing, I think, at nine. The Hamilton Police Fund is a nonprofit community group that was established to assist in the purchase of equipment that will increase the capability of the police department to serve the community. So if anyone's interested in participating in that disc golf tournament, well, just get over there and register. North Mississippi Medical Center in Hamilton is hosting their annual community health fair on Wednesday, August the fifteenth, from seven a.m. until three p.m. So this is a good opportunity to go down there and get checked for free. And then the Junior Miss Hamilton Pageant, the annual pageant will be held on Sunday, August twenty-sixth, at two p.m. at the Bell State Community College. And applications are now online and being accepted for the two thousand and twelve Bud Haci River File Fest. So mark your calendar and there's a, you can go in on the internet and register at www.brforg.org. So that is October File Fest, October twenty-seventh, downtown Hamilton. So that's all the announcements, all the announcements I have.
All that being said, I just want to commend the chamber. We're doing such an excellent job of keeping their members and all informed about all these activities. And things are coming up, you know, things slip our mind. And just look right there, you've got it all condensed on this floor. I appreciate that, appreciate that.
I'd also like to say ball baseball, ball baseball registration is underway and so is soccer. So go to the rec center or the soccer. And there's a number on the city board uptown about ball baseball.
An announcement for a business that's opening, I guess it's too late to get it on the agenda. La Ta Coria is a Mexican restaurant that's going to open on Second Avenue Southwest on Friday, the seventeenth, from six p.m. until probably about ten p.m. The request to permit to close the street between Second Street and First Street Southwest, just that one block by the sports gallery. And they're going to have live music and a grand opening there. And I've encouraged them to contact this Chamber of Commerce.
And what time does it start?
Six p.m. on Friday, the seventeenth. It's just a new business coming to town. Yes, sir. But they've asked for the permit to close the street then, and we don't see any problems with it. And it's a new business coming to town.
Thank you, I didn't know about that.
It's going to be a great restaurant.
Real impressed. Y'all have any thoughts? If not, we appreciate all the visitors coming and we welcome you back.
I'll make a motion, sir.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Next, April, all in favor?